The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis zoning board of adjustment will now begin.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this live broadcast of a virtual meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. This meeting is being conducted in a virtual format where members are participating via telephone or other electronic means as authorized under Minnesota statutes, section 13D dot zero two one, due to the declared local health pandemic. We will now introduce Chair Perry to convene this meeting.
Thank you very much. This is the April 23rd, 2020 zoning board of adjustment regular meeting. My name is Matt Perry and I'm chair of the board. I will now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Cooper.
Here.
Finlayson.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Present.
Johansson.
Aye.
O'Gibbe.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Sandberg.
Present.
Softley.
Aye.
Wang.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system, available at L I M S dot Minneapolis M N dot gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved. This is Finlayson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. This is Sandberg.
Sandberg seconds. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I see none. Seeing all in favor, will the clerk please call the, I'm sorry, not all in favor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlayson.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
O'Gibbe.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softley.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
That's nine yay. Thank you.
All right. I believe all of the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from our April 9th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Finlayson.
Second. Sandberg.
Finlayson moves and Sandberg seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? I see none. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlayson.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
O'Gibbe.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softley.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine yay.
I think because Ms. Wang was not on the board last time around, she should be in abstain.
Noted. So then that would be eight yay.
Yep. So with that, the minutes from the zoning board of adjustment, April 9th, 2020 meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, there are no specific communications or petitions from staff this evening. Thank you.
Would this be an appropriate time to have Ms. Wang introduce herself?
I think so. Sure. It would be that or new business. So this would be a good opportunity as well if we want to introduce her at the beginning.
Yeah. So Ms. Wang, do you want to just introduce yourself? I'm sorry, it has to be virtually for your first board meeting.
Let me turn my camera on really quick. Hello, my name is Annie Wang. I'm a resident of Minneapolis and Longfellow, and I am honored to join the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for serving. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent or discussion. And I'll just talk a little bit about what these things are. Consent items are those items that will be passed without discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommendation found on your agenda under the items recommended motions section. And importantly, any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including any applicable conditions, you need to do nothing and the board will pass it as recommended. If you have any questions, you can check in with the staff member assigned to that item and they can answer those questions that you might have. If you disagree with the recommendation for consent, please indicate you'd like to speak against that item when I ask and we'll put it on the discussion agenda. So what are discussion items? These are items for which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and then make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. So let's review our land use requests on today's agenda. Agenda item number five is 5645 Dupont Avenue South, and this is a discussion item. Agenda item number six is 3801 44th Avenue South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone in the queue who would like to speak against this item?
No.
I see, I'm hearing no one wants to speak against this item. Okay. And agenda item number seven is 5935 Gerard Avenue South. Staff is also recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone who wants to speak against this item who's on the phone? Sounds like no one. So let's review the items on the agenda for consent. They are items six and seven. Is there a motion to adopt these items on consent?
So moved. This is Finlayson.
Finlayson moves. Is there a second?
Second. This is Sandberg.
Sandberg is seconding. There's a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlayson.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
O'Gibbe.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softley.
Aye.
Wang.
Yes.
That's eight yay.
Okay, so that motion passes. So if you were here or on the phone for item six or seven, your land use requests are approved. Good luck with your projects. Thanks for staying on the line.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to number five. This is 5645 Dupont Avenue South. Mr. Colhouse?
Thank you Chair Perry and members of the board. Could we get this slides up on the screen and actually starting on the second slide? If possible.
Oh, clarification. This is for the staff presentation rather than the applicant presentation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you clerk for clarifying. I'll begin by providing a little bit of context for the property while those are being brought up. This request is for a variance to reduce the required corner side yard from eight feet to four feet for construction of a rear deck at 5645 Dupont Avenue South. And there is an existing deck on, and there's a slide. Thank you. Could we get that second slide maximized on the screen? Thank you. So this is a survey provided by the applicant showing the existing property. There is a existing single family dwelling as well as a detached garage and an existing rear deck that is approximately 206 square feet. And that existing deck is located approximately 10 feet from the corner side lot line along 57th Street West. Could we advance to the next slide, please? And I think we'll stay here for the rest of the presentation of my presentation. This is a proposed site plan and some detailed deck plans for a proposed replacement and expansion of that existing deck. The total new deck would be approximately 580 square feet and has a proposed setback of four feet from the corner side lot line at its closest point. I'll provide some additional context. In the zoning code, decks and ground level patios may be a permitted obstruction within a required corner side yard, provided that they are located no more than four feet within that required yard and that the total deck does not exceed 50 square feet. Now, the applicant's proposal in this case does not meet that requirement that it be limited to a maximum size of 50 square feet total. Therefore, the variance is required to reduce that corner side setback in this case. I'll transition to talking about the required findings. The first finding regarding practical difficulties due to circumstances unique to the property, staff finds that this is not met. The subject property and the house itself on the property are both fairly typical in size and location. There is a slight slope on the property, but not to the extent that it would substantially limit the potential location of a deck on the property. Furthermore, there is a significant portion of the rear yard to the north of the existing deck, which is currently open space and would remain open as part of this project. And the applicant can likely construct a deck expansion in this open area of the property without a variance. For the second required finding regarding reasonable use of the property and the spirit and intent of the ordinance, staff also finds that this is not met. The spirit and intent of required yards generally are to promote orderly development, ensure access to light, air, and open space, and provide separation between uses and structures. And the spirit and intent of the permitted obstructions requirements discussed earlier are to allow some flexibility for the location of smaller improvements that have less potential for off-site impacts and require larger improvements to comply with the standard setback requirements. In this case, staff finds that the applicant's proposal does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance to provide separation between uses and structures, in this case between the proposed deck and the nearby public sidewalk on the right of way. And also considering the size of the proposed deck, staff does not find that it meets the spirit and intent of permitted obstruction requirements previously described. Furthermore, the existing house is nonconforming to that corner side setback and there was a variance approved back in 1971 to reduce that setback to seven feet for in addition to the house. But the applicant's proposal in this case would make the property even more nonconforming. The last required finding regarding the essential character of the locality and the general health, safety, and welfare of the general public, staff does not find that this is met. Though the expanded deck would be entirely enclosed by an existing fence, which would not be altered as part of this project. And while staff does not find that the proposed variance would be detrimental to the general health, safety, or welfare of the general public, staff were not able to find that the proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the locality as it would be substantially closer to that corner side setback than what is there now and what is, you know, found in other parts of the immediate area. In conclusion, staff recommends denial of the requested variance to reduce the required corner side setback from eight feet to four feet for construction of a expanded deck. And with that, all safer questions.
Thanks for that presentation, Mr. Colhouse. Are there questions, Mr. Sandberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Colhouse. I just have one quick question. I think the lower left, I believe southwest corner of the deck shows a stairway going up to the deck. Would that stairway and some kind of landing be a permitted obstruction? Or would the entire structure need to be conforming to the setback?
Thank you Chair Perry and Board Member Sandberg. I believe that the entire, because the stairs would be attached to the deck, it is considered part of that deck as well. And while there are separate requirements and conditions for permitted obstructions, if it was just a landing and stairs, in this case, because it is part of the overall deck structure, I believe it's subject to the requirements for a deck.
I, Chair Perry, this is Brad Ellis, Manager of Zoning Administration. I do want to jump in and make a point here on Alex's point. We would treat a tiny landing and steps to the deck as a separate permitted obstruction so that the trouble, so it wouldn't need like a separate variance. I guess what I'm, I hope that answered the question.
Mr. Sandberg?
I think it does.
Okay.
I apologize. Yeah.
Are there any other questions of staff? I don't see any. So we will now open the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant at first. Is the applicant available by the phone?
The applicant is Vicki Olson. Press star six to unmute and state your name and address for the record and begin your comments.
Yes, this is Vicki Olson. I live at 5645 Dupont Avenue South. So I first wanted to say to Chair Perry and board members, I work in healthcare, so I commend you on figuring out a way to do these public hearings in a different way. So congratulations on that. I sat in on the last hearing also. I wanted to first address the practical difficulties. I think the recommendation to deny was based on the thought that I could expand to the north on my backyard and just wanted to mention that, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm looking at the picture and because of the bag, it's quite distracting. So I did have some additional attachments. So can that be shared with the members?
There were two, there were Ms. Olson, there were two additional photos that we received today. And one of them is on the screen. It is of the basement.
I actually had quite a few other ones, so I'm surprised that didn't come through. I have.
And another one was of the air conditioner unit.
Isn't there multiple pages there or? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be eight pages. Yes. So the air conditioner, I was just trying to show in the yard, kind of the location of it. To me, felt like a practical difficulty. I have grandchildren that are two and four and another one on the way. So building a deck around a air conditioner felt like a safety issue, not to mention the noise was not really conducive for building a deck. The other issue is if you look at the basement picture, I have affluorescence and known moisture issues. And so I have worked to do a French drain. I've raised window wells. I've added gutters on my garage and was recommended that I address through landscaping. So I did have a third drying, yeah, that's it. Of the, of the plan that I have, landscaping plan for grading and landscaping in that corner. That's lowest kind of area. So the water comes down the hill, kind of hits my house. So the issue is how to get it around my house. So it was actually scheduled last fall, but because of the wet fall, got delayed until the spring. So it didn't seem prudent to build a deck and complicate the moisture issue by expanding the deck to that side of the yard. So those are the two main reasons why I thought there was practical difficulty in building to the north side. My proposed variance has been modified to minimize the amount of the variance requested. I've, over the last five years, done a lot of improvements in my property with remodel and rough replacement and energy efficient furnace, sliding glass door. And now my intent was to replace the deck, which is rotting. The current deck is not big enough for a medium sized table with six chairs. And so I was expanding to the east a little bit so that the, so the table could be put sideways. And then my intent was to be able to have some space to put some lounge chairs on the south side of the sunroom so that I could move around to the grill and table areas. So in that area, I planned for access from the natural walkway from the kitchen door. So there's side steps on the south side of the house from the kitchen door and so a natural walkway to that proposed addition to my deck. So I thought this was a reasonable request, particularly living in this area for some time. So that was the other pictures that I wanted to show you. It's hard for me to tell because of the way exactly where you are. But maybe you've already looked through them all here. But the first, the first page just had a pergola that was, you know, so these are things that are clearly not within the variance of being 10 foot, 10, 10 feet when you add the two feet for the lot, property lot line from the sidewalk. So in example, the pergola on that same page was a concrete pad, which was probably the most similar to what mine would look like and being a low deck. It has four lawn chairs on it. And so, and it certainly was not, it also was not within the variance. Then there were just some other structures. So, you know, playground equipment that was quite tall was close, close to the fence. So obviously went in the variance. This other, I don't know if it's a tool shed or whatever it is. There's a neighbor starting a vegetable garden, you know, so when we talk about separate uses of property and having some separation, the whole front area of one side of their front is, can be some kind of garden. And then you can see the waterfall is clearly impinging on the variance in that that fence is actually on the sidewalk. And then a couple, on the next page, just a couple more examples of the, of a deck that goes to the fence. So it's, it's right up against the fence. And then another patio that's right up against the sidewalk. So it's clearly, there's no variance. So I think that's why I was a little bit surprised, but I have learned on the very last page, just a couple of examples of what I see more frequently is tall fences. So example of a tall fence as well as the retaining wall with a tall fence on top of it. I did just a little survey. I just went down 56 between Lyndale and Penn. So it's a 16 block area. So if there's four houses a block, that's about 64 quarter lots. And in that area, in that area, there were 30 tall fences that I couldn't see, see over. And so that 46% of the lots had tall fences. So when we talk about ensuring access to light and air, it feels like, you know, the deck that I have planned is much more, is low. So there's no issue there in access to the light and air. And I think a lot of the high fences, it's not clear what is exactly on the, on the other side of them. But so in summary, I just wanted to say in terms of orderly development, I put a lot of thought into the landscaping plan in my yard. And the intent of replacing the deck is to make it look contiguous and very in, in, in high quality in terms of it being a feeder deck. Already addressed the ensuring access to light and air, I don't think is an issue. And then providing separation between the uses and structures, there would still be six feet between the sidewalk and my fence and the deck. The intent is that I will be putting bushes there so it wouldn't be even obvious to the, to anybody walking by. So I think that, that ends my presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. And please stay in line. There may be questions that we have from the board. I want to make one clarification. I misspoke. We did get all of your slides. There was more than just two. And they were presented on the screen of the board as you were talking, making your presentation. So we've seen those. And I also wanted to bring up the fact that when you are wandering around the neighborhood as we will do when we're trying to do a project like this, you may be coming across things that are nonconforming and not legal. So our focus is really on your property and what is legal and what is nonconforming and needs a variance. So the other, I appreciate you giving sort of the flavor of what you saw, but we don't really know the status of what those fences are and how close they are to the, the property, the required, how far they are into the required yard and so forth. We just don't know that. But thank you for sharing those with us. So there are questions of Ms. Olson? Mr. O'Gibbe?
Thank you Chair Perry. Thanks Ms. Olson for your presentation here. I just, I have a question. Looking at the plans, you had brought up some concerns over water retention specifically to the north side of the property. Looking at the plans here, I'm looking at page, it's page 10 of the, of the packet. There is, it mentions a retaining wall on the east, what would be the east side of the property and the east side of both the existing deck as well as would be on the east side of the proposed addition. So my question is the, just kind of some of the purpose behind that, how long that has been in place, how that fit into your design and your proposal for this deck, specific to that retaining wall on the east side.
Yes. So that, the intent was that that would be where I would put the table. So expanding the deck, right now, there's not enough room to move between the grill and to get out of the house and around to the sidewalk with having a medium sized table. And so the intent was that the deck would expand to that east side and I would turn the table so that it would be lengthwise. That would allow enough room to get out of the sliding glass door, be able to use the grill, be able to move into the, use the sidewalk that goes to my detached garage as well as then the intent was to also go then to the right to be able to go to this area for a couple lounge chairs.
Got it. Got it. So then just for a point of clarification, you're just saying the usefulness of the desk, the deck would allow for it to be expanded to that retaining wall at the east. And that essentially is kind of a stopping point for its furthest expansion to, to that, to that portion of the property?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Gibbe, are there any other questions of the applicant? I see none. So is there anyone else? I think there is anybody else in the queue to talk on this. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is no one else in the queue to speak on this matter.
Okay, so let's close the public hearing. Board comment? Is there any comment from the board?
Chair Perry, John Finlayson.
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that there's a moisture issue on the north side and from the appearance in the photographs, that's where the air conditioning unit is located as well, which was brought up by the applicant. The location of a air conditioner is, my understanding, having talked with people in the business, is that the best place to locate is on the north side in the shade, so it doesn't get direct sun. So it's, the air conditioning unit appears to be located in an optimal place, and there is also a issue with water on the north side, so it's easy to see why the applicant gravitated towards the location that was suggested. But I'd like to hear a further comment from my fellow board members. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. And Mr. Softley, we'll just get to you in a minute. What I do want to remind the board is that staff found for none of the three findings. So if you're interested in granting this variance, you'll need to find for all three findings. Mr. Softley?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I agree with staff recommendation and with the staff report. I don't see any of the three elements being met, and I'm open to being convinced by my colleagues, but I would, I would vote staff recommendation.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Softley. Are there others who would like to comment? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I agree with the board member Softley. I feel like with the deck so close to the sidewalk and the change in elevation, that it'll be kind of odd and intimidating, and I do feel like there's areas where the deck could grow and not impede into this kind of side front yard area. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Johansson. Others? Anyone else want to speak to this? Mr. Sandberg?
Thank you, Chair Perry. I agree with Mr. Softley and Mr. Johansson. I believe this is a fairly large deck, and I think staff recommendations would hold. So I'll move staff recommendations at this point.
There's a motion to move staff, adopt staff recommendation and deny the variance. Is there a second?
Second, this is Softley.
Mr. Softley has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I see no one, and so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cooper.
Aye.
Finlison.
Aye.
Hutchins.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Oguiba.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Aye.
Softley.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's eight yea.
So with that, the variance request is denied. Ms. Olson, you can talk to the staff person you've been working with, Mr. Colhouse, to talk about what your options are going forward. And appreciate you being on the phone and giving your presentation today. With that, is there any old business? Does anybody have any old business? Is there any new business? I'm seeing none. And so if there are no objections, I will adjourn today's meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. We are adjourned.